Okay, we have some bids open here for paving project.
So, the first bid is from Paul Baker and it's an amount of ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. And this is for paving West Charles Street from right across the street from the Brooklyn and it came back towards APR. Paving Windy Way and paving Lombardi Circle. Our guesstimate was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so the ninety thousand nine ninety-six eighties low would've been the threshold. And what's this one?
Falk Road.
This is Falk Road and Falk Road is... Hundred and four thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. So, if they ask council to... we can look over these and if they're in order, if we can award the paving contract to the lowest bidder being Paul Baker's.
Motion made properly second. Question? All those bidders who consented by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, next one again, we got the walking trail bid update. Bill?
Hi, thank you.
You're on.
Look this in here tonight, please.
It's in comments.
Okay, well, you're gonna supplement my... but I don't add the technical part, so there's no...
Yep.
You got all the stuff presented to you. Okay. Since we have some new council members, this is a little name map of the Ellis Trail. Now, I also have here a summary of some of the bid results we have for the walking trail. And this walking trail, you know, has been going on, we've had discussions for at least probably three years, probably, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. So, we sent out bids to a number of contractors in April and bids came back higher than we anticipated. So, we met with Mark Remmy and the county solicitor and Scott and we came to the determination, in order to make this work, we needed to rethink how we did this out. So, in this handout, you'll see that we had a original proposal which included everything and you see the prices are more than what we could afford. We only have... we had four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of which about four hundred and sixty-one is actually could be used for the trail because some has to be used for engineering and for everybody's costs. But, that being said, when you look at these costs, you see they're all fairly expensive, the cheapest at that time was five sixty-nine all the way up to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, we wanted to see what we could do, so we started looking at developing enhancements, what we could take out and add back in. That way, we could prepare to all contractors. And then we looked at changing the surface course of the trail and the parking lots. And I think, Scott, you can confirm that the surface is now comparable to some of your alleys since that current...
If you look at those numbers, I mean, our original amount that we had for this project was four hundred and eighty-one thousand, which included the engineering fees. When we got the bids back, we started tearing them apart because there were, you know, there were a hundred thousand more than what our expectation was. And what was sending the costs substantially skyward was the fact that we were putting a four-inch base coat down of nine-and-a-half millimeter stone and then coming back with an inch-and-a-half top coat on the trail. Well, if you think about it, there's only one way in and one way out. So, after they do the base coat, the only way to get the top coat in was to back all the equipment all the way up to the cement plant and then bring it back out again. And they're been talking with the contractors, there was fear that they would damage the base coat going that far with all that heavy equipment. So, we looked at a few behind South Hills Business School. That alley was paved, it didn't have a finished coat on it, but it had an upgraded base coat, which if you didn't know any better, you wouldn't be able to tell. So, we looked at if we eliminate the second complete pass with labor, it just went to one pass with a upgraded base coat, what it would do to prices. So, you can see it's over a hundred thousand dollars less.
And some other things we had to look at doing was we took out something, we looked at, we broke out the amenities, we broke out... One of the options we found was expensive, we had a walking area between Riverside Drive and the trail. That itself was almost over forty-some thousand dollars and so by eliminating that, that also saved money. I mean, it's not something we wouldn't want to consider in the future, but it just was something we could eliminate. There's also some gates we looked at, eliminated. We also looked at some landscaping that we can look at doing later on some point, I guess. And the other thing we looked at was the key thing that we wanted to see was not, was the base trail was there and also to upgrade the parking area at Victory Park. You'll notice part of Victory Park is asphalt and part of it is gravel. This would make this all asphalt and some of it would be resurfacing, some would be brand-new. And then there would also be struck, because we have parking, so it'd be better organized. We've already got a new HLP requiring for the permit to get into Victory Park or how we often see permits from Penn on. So, we did all that, so all those costs were in our thought process. Then we also tried to build in what we had left based on making these changes. And you'll see in here, we said the base bid dropped when we changed the wearing course to the low bid, it was three thirty-five, five seventy-two. Then we had the parking lot, which was seventy-seven, two thirty-eight, which is a lot less than it was the other regionally. We added sight lights, which are basically solar lights around the boat launch, which is one of the options, we looked at solar lights around Victory Park and around the boat launch. The boat launch is darker than the area around Victory Park, so we thought that would make more sense, at least from that standpoint. Like I said, there's solar lights, so there's not gonna be a lot of costs involved. And then we included four benches along the walking course. That brought the total to four fifty, eight sixty-six seventy-six. And that's based on the low bid, you see how this compares with the other contractors. So, it's all laid out there. And like I said, the thing we don't include now, we don't have, you'll see in the notes here, but it doesn't include, you see what the cost savings are when we did these comparisons. So, what we're trying to do is get you to approve the low bid, first reject the first bid we got, approve the low bid and then let us authorize us to go forward with Falk Road. The same information's gonna be presented to the county commissioners this Thursday.
The net amount to the borough, we used forty-three thousand of CDBG money as upstart money, but we're getting forty-three thousand from Mr. Roddable to name the park. So, the net amount to the borough on almost a half million dollar project is zero.
The parking area you're talking about, Bill, is that down by the boat launch, you're talking about down by Snyder Group, that wide-open area?
That area, that... we do work on the same place, right?
He's talking about the area down by Snyder Group, about the parking?
The Victory Park parking area? Yes. Where it's about a third of its park is paved now, the rest is just crushed rock. So, it's gonna be milling all the crushed rock, putting in a four-and-a-half inch base and then an overlay over the whole thing.
But it'll be a lot nicer as a starting point of the trail and we talked about, I mean, it isn't at high expense, but if you want this to look nice, you want this to be the starting point. So, that's why, I mean, we had to make some choices of what we could make, we could make work with the money we had. And like I said, Scott and I talked about maybe in the future, looking at what we could do internally later on down the road, including some landscaping. Landscaping was killing us in terms of what they were charging us for landscaping, so we thought that was one of the things we eliminated, extra landscaping, all those things.
So, somebody asked me a question this afternoon, why don't we take this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and approve the streets and alleys in the borough? Which was a legitimate question. Unfortunately, that's not an option with this grant money. I mean, it's specific to parts of recreations, one's the DCEB grant and the other with DCR.
And those of you who don't remember, four hundred and thirty came to the county and two hundred and fifty came to the borough. And that's how they came together, that's why it's taken three years to do this, to make this all work.
Well, that would be my question too, because, so we have enough grant money to cover all this, nothing's coming out of the boroughs, budget for this at all. Because, I mean, we do have a lot of roads there and they approve it.
And we just got a little bonus tonight, we're basically got another hundred thousand and we can use it for paving. Based on, you know, that's assuming that all the numbers are right.
We put in this, we have a... just so you know, we... there's a small cushion in this and that's why you're gonna see about eight to ten thousand dollar cushion in here. Because we don't, there's unknown, I think you always know that it's gonna be unknown and that's why we lucked it for a fifty. Because it's just, I mean, it's just smart, especially when contractors get a better knowledge of things, we have to watch this. And if we end up with less extra money, what Scott and I talked about was maybe we could buy the materials in the borough, could install some things on their own later on. But we'll just see how that plays out in the end, but I'd rather have a little extra at the end, so that's the way this works.
How does changing the base coat and stuff work for upkeep of the trail? I mean, is this gonna be four years down the road with weather that it's gonna need to be redone?
I don't think it's gonna have a significant impact and we'll just get to it, I'm just on to that. Especially since this is for walking, not driving.
Right, now, we have had a thicker base and then your typical top course, which is a thinner stone. And since it is just a walking and a bike trail, there's a paving material that sort of blends the two and it's based on the size of the stone. So, we're just a little bit thicker than the fine course, but no, I think it'll hold up very well. And then with having a little bit of a thicker stone in there too, it'll allow the sewer trucks to access the manholes. And I just think it's the best of both worlds, we can put it down in one four-inch coat and as long as everything compacted well and constructed, sound, I think we should be all right.
There do more benches, Jim, and based on the price we got and what it costs us to put the benches in here, that's where we left them and that's really... Yeah, that's very competitive.
There was one other thing we took out, like we... there's all those, we took out the trash receptacle for hide, which we thought we should look at, like for instance, buying it separately and then installing it. Because you don't know this worth, Jim, we're paying prevailing wages, we're paying...
Well, I was gonna ask you, I'm sure this is prevailing wage.
Yes, we're paying higher than you would pay us on the thing.
The other thing you know that was the weight of the trucks to pour the base for the benches, they can do that before they lay the emasseyed, so that was kind of a trade-off. Yeah, it probably is a little high, but it's not that far off, it just cost to put the two benches.
You're not gonna get around to prevailing wage.
No.
Good job.
Four hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Four hundred and eighty, not four hundred. It's only four hundred and eighty though.
Excuse me?
Not far.
I'm off a quarter of a percent.
I just decided, then we have, then plus we have the other thing, you guys with engineering, engineering costs and stuff, which you've already been working on. I mean, Scott knows, we, once we got approval, we were doing as rapidly as we could, once we got approval on this grant, so...
So, what Bill's asking is for council's approval to move forward with this project, because we'd like to award the grants. Currently, in the bid package, it was the deadline of October first?
Yes.
And have the project completed.
I mean, the project won't, hopefully won't take that long, but it's whether we weather everything else, we wanna make sure this way we can, we can afford this and they wouldn't get it in their cycle of work and stuff like that. That's kinda what we're moving us along on, what we are. And I thought we did remarkably well to rebid a project within a two-week cycle, it was pretty, pretty good, so...
Anybody have any other questions for Bill? Council voices on this. Here, motion to proceed?
I'll make that motion.
Motion seconded.
I'll second it.
Motion made properly second. Except the low bid here from Falk Road, am I correct? Question? Roll call, look, please.
Venus Shade, yes. Mark Seaver?
Yes.
Jim Felling?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yes.
Larry Sears?
Yes.
Could we ask for a motion to reject all the bids from the first round of bidding, just to make sure everything is...
Yeah, I'm saying aye.
I'll make that motion, a motion that we reject the previous higher bids, right, Mark?
Yes.
Motion made properly second. Question? All those bidders who consented by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose? Who cares?
Thanks, Bill.
Do you have any questions for us?
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna jump now to this server for the police station. Mike Tate asked me, he has some commitments and if there's any questions for him, the answer, he needs to get out of here as soon as he can. So, once again, we're gonna bring up about the police server at the police station. Dave, you wanna say anything then?
I asked Mike to be present here at the meeting tonight, so maybe he can answer any questions the council has about the server we currently have, what the situation is with it and why we need to do it. So, Mike, free to come tonight and thank you for being here. If anybody has any questions, I mean, I've been going over this before, I don't know what other questions council has, but I'm glad to answer anything I can and Mike's here tonight to answer other questions, so...
Mike, you wanna give a little sermon here, quick and just the basics, what we're looking at and then we'll see if anybody wants to follow through yet.
Numbers wise, I don't know where it's at, I got too many in my head, but you guys have the most up-to-date.
Thirteen-six lucky weight, quite a bit, so we can never get it exact, but we can get pretty close.
Time is ordering it tomorrow, I can give you exact penny today. Because of, you know, being a public candidate, it's harder, whatever, things are changing. Just like any other companies, the police department needs a new server. They will be out of compliance... Next year, but the problem is now is we're running out of room. Literally, I don't know how many more weeks I have. I don't know what I'm gonna do, if we start running out of room, we'll just have to move it through some of the older data, but any problem is with moving any of that data, the officers, if they get a look for something, they may miss something. Miss a warrant or miss, or it could be a safety issue that they do, there may be a note about somebody that I had to temporarily move off and I don't wanna do that. We also looked at some other options. I know technology is confusing to a lot. You know, this is a physical server that resides at the police station, just like Burrell has a physical server that resides in a cabinet. We've looked at virtual servers for the police department. But it's definitely not cost-effective because we have to go with what they call a DOJX, Department Adjusters Approved Cloud, and it's about forty percent more. A lot of small businesses, when you start looking at new, let's say a cloud, where you're just paying a monthly fee, you never, you never own it, but you're paying for a service. It actually saves a lot of smaller businesses money, but not for the police department or government level, because you have to have that type of security, because you don't need that, somebody getting hold of that information. I can't get parts anymore for the one, I think it's probably two years ago I got one, some parts and got it going. It's being backed up every night, so if something happens, I have it backed up. It just might take me a day or two to get the police back up, a temporary solution, so...
Anybody on council have any questions for Mike while I'm here?
You said how much room, Mike? Estimate, I mean, I guess a room would depend upon how much information goes in.
Yes. We have about fifty gigs left, so what would that be equivalent to? Eight to ten DVD movies?
Right.
I kind of jokingly blame Dave and Rich, since they have been part of Lowest County Police Department. The data has almost, it was doubled there for several months, now it's kind of leveled off. But the reason that data has tremendously increased, it's leveled off now, but the officers are taking what I would call, better, not better... They have been educated and trained how to use the system like it's supposed to be, so all those evidence, pictures, testimonies, all that stuff is being put in there. Because you may need a seventy down the road, you may need a three-hour down the road, if you don't know. There's other things in the works, this is not happening fast enough with grant money to potentially link all the police departments together so they can do an information sharing. So, when they're searching, I call it a super search, they search a name, it actually pulls data from all the departments, they actually pull from the DA's office. But there's a grant that doesn't, it's not gonna work for that grant, but there's another one coming up, crossing my fingers, because I feel that that would be almost as beneficial as a light vest or a Falk Road vest for one of the officers of having that told. But we do need a new server to keep them alive, I guess I wanna say. Police departments are different than regular businesses, the officers are actually removing it in from their cars so they can pull all that information. Now, Lowest County Police has not set up to do e-ticketing, but hopefully that will be a goal someday, that tremendously saves all the pot of paperwork. But those officers sometimes, when they're doing different, it's hard, I can't wind up so much detail with it. If they're doing something, they can't be rating, putting it over the radio, so they have that access to do it in their car, you know? Until the year comes that we get the new digital radios that are secure, you know, I don't see that happen anytime soon, because that's millions of dollars for this county and it's too much to swallow for our police and fire departments right now. But I knew their workforce, I'm not really in that league, so... But... When did the borough get their new server? Two years ago? Three years ago? Okay, it's three years old. Usually figure the life is gonna be about five years. That server respect to have five-year, keep your drive, what does that mean? Generally, the number one thing it fails on computers or servers is the hard drive. I cannot send them back to hard drive, because it has data for them, just like the county courthouse, they got copy machines that have little hard drives in them, pre-scanning and stuff like that. But when they go off the lease, they gotta go out and spend a couple hundred bucks and buy a brand-new hard drive and throw in it and keep the other one. But we get to keep our drives, so that way we can make sure it's destroyed, which is another process, I don't forget the term you call it, just de-banned, dis-banned?
Yeah, there's another term for it.
They do something to it and then the next step is they get shredded, so... That way, there's no chance of that data being breached by anybody, so...
Do we know how long any data or state, I don't know, the old data has to be maintained in there? How long, when can you dispose of that data?
Never.
Never?
I say never.
You say never, but we don't know what to say to the pedals.
Would the private depend on what the data is?
Yeah, I understand that.
Evidence, pictures?
But if it possibly be that in there, that could be...
So, criminal, you could say, you know, after seven years, it's not there, they can't, case law, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but case law, after seven years, you can't be... So, you could say seven years for a criminal case, but if I were one of the officers and I run a name on somebody and eight years ago, I can see an incident that happened, it was a criminal case that was related, that may save my life or my fellow officer's life.
Do you think that'd be on file somewhere else other than here, if there's a criminal record?
Which would be, you know, that, you know...
I can't believe it'd just be on this server itself, I'd be thinking on this hard drive itself, I think it would go somewhere else also, as far as criminal record, especially if that incident went to court.
Right, now, what we call JNET. What JNET is, is it's an information portal that is only for code enforcement, law enforcement, magistrates and the administrative people that make those things work, where you can put warrants and lock most of that information there. But sometimes our officers will put comments and some of those comments are not meant to be public. But those comments may say something about, you know, I mean, I know there's incidents where this...
I'm just trying to think out of the box here what that's on.
Nobody's ever said how long to keep it.
Right.
So, as, as technology keeps moving on, the software that this county or police departments use, which is bought out by another tech company. I feel that they're gonna be really investing into this software, so what I call archiving, meaning you can condense old data, but you can still access it, but you gotta open it even a little. But that, I know that's coming, because the data has exploded over the last few years. But the cost of data to store it, five years ago, ten years ago, you know, I mean, look at your smartphones, they used to be eight gigs, now they're seven fifty-six gigs. I know it's techie, but technology's changing, you know? I think, how old's the server sitting there now? Maybe eight? Seven? But literally a five-year, two of the hard drives failed. And the new server, size-wise, like how much it can store, about ten times? Eight times? At least ten times, I think, or four. And it's all personal preference, I don't wanna get too geeky with it, but the amount of hard drives and your data's on multiple drives at the same time, we kind of spec it for worst-case scenario. So, the current system in there now, one drive failed, we're down. I think I can have two drives, two drives... I think I can have two drives, two drives simultaneously fail and I can still operate. And I'm gonna have some alarms, but the guys can still operate, so that way we get parts overnighted, you know? Which that does have the five year, keep your drive on a warranty, I call it.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, what's council wishes for the server?
I think we need to move that to a different discussion here.
Yeah, I mean, this has been brought up several times.
And it needs to be discussed, but in a different, maybe executive session.
I like to hear before the ad hoc. Who is? Please add on.
Maybe Mr. Wilson?
Okay, Mike, I guess we're no more questions, so we're gonna, they want to discuss it in an executive session, so.
We can't, we can't learn.
What? You say we can't?
I like to hear before the. Say it all, I like to hear.
Because it depends on the outcome of that committee's findings. It's not a question of them needing a server, I don't think that that's debatable at all.
Okay, any other people have anything you want to bring up? Randy?
Yeah. My name's Randy Cutler, I live down South Grand Street.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Wellum. Spoke with him this morning concerning some property on my street. The grass was just outrageous and his immediate action with anybody else involved, part of it's taken care of today. I'm here to speak on behalf of your server, I don't know how many houses, seven or eight houses on Fleming Avenue from the intersection at Kish Street to the middle school. They paved all around the middle school last year and over by Grand Parkway. But the intersection from Kish Street up to the upper parking lot of the middle school is just, it's, it's deplorable. I have some pictures here in case anybody wants to see them. Shoving, first couple are showing Fleming Avenue in real good condition. And then from the intersection at Kish Street up to the, up to the upper parking lot. And the residents there travel it every day, the school buses travel it every day. The students are bounced around every day, back and forth. The parents that take their kids to school, you know, it's just a real mess.
Are you familiar with the upcoming project for that area? Are you, you wanna fill in?
I didn't see it on, like, last year when the streets were announced.
This is, this is a, a project that's coming up for that area?
I don't think what he's talking about.
It's not the same area? Not like it is, it's not like it is.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
You're talking about from?
Yeah, that, that's, it's thirty-four thousand, three hundred and five dollars to pay for what you're talking about. And what we were gonna do that with, we have about seven hundred thousand to spend from Charles Street up to that intersection. And we were gonna do it all of one, one shot, because we're gonna have the paving equipment. We can just come up there and right around the corner, right up to where the school paved last year. It's on, it's on the short list as far as projects that we need to do, but we, there's no sense doing it in conjunction with the project we're gonna be doing on Kish Street.
I was on, you know, I didn't know.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to.
I was just speaking, you know, I mean, the buses and the, and the cars and the students and the parents and the teachers and the residents, you know.
That is on the list.
My wife is the vice principal at that school, I hear it every night at dinner, what are you gonna pave the street? So I, I'm fully aware of that street.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your concern.
Okay, great deal as well, I appreciate it.
But you know what? I, I really appreciate concerned citizens with any, any, any issue, so you're more than welcome in my office anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You want to take your bag, Randy?
No.
Yeah, that's.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring before council, where we go in there?
I don't know, maybe I, if I can ask, is this the first time that I'm here at the Borough Council meeting? Thought I noticed anything that I can bring up or yes, okay. So, so mine is, I'm sorry, I should stand.
Can you say, state your name, please?
Angelica Rupert. So mine is, I have a few things if that's okay. So mine is regarding permits. So if I'm doing anything at my house, I have to get a permit. I understand in some ways that I have to get a permit, like if I would get a stove in because it has to be by code and whatever. But if for instance, I'm getting new windows in, I'm already having existing windows in there and now I'm getting new windows in, or just a little project, everybody's out, like you need to get a permit. My thing is, if I have to get a permit for everything, I feel like I'm a good, how do I wanna say that? I'm a good person, I do everything by what I need to do. And it's almost like a punishment. And I'm sometimes wondering if we would eliminate permits for some of this stuff, if, if more people would do something on their house? Because it's like, well, I have the key for everything, like, why do I wanna fix up my house, you know? So it's almost like a little bit reversed, like do something good for the people who want to do good, you know? But anyway, so that's one of my things. And another thing is like, Louis Town Center, like, you know, Louis Town in the Middle is so nicely fixed up and a lot of, you know, money and rent money's being put in. But when you drive around, like Louis Town, the big alley, and I'm not even talking about the paving. I'm talking about how houses look like all jumped out. And I live on the four hundred block and I have on a three hundred block that a house that's being rented out and it's a big issue, it's always the renting, is, it looks like crap. And so I'm thinking, okay, so you can drive around and look at like, oh, they're doing a project, you need to get a permit. But I'm like, I'm wondering, or I'm asking, is anything being done to people where it really looks, I'm like, I'm ashamed where I'm living because it's going downhill.
Where do you live, Angelica?
Four hundred block, South French Street.
South French, okay, I didn't hear.
And this is not only this block, it's just seems like everywhere. So in like, for instance, where the, the fire company is, there is, I don't know who owns it. She had a store, now she closed or whatever, but she has been sitting out. Like, it's so unattractive, unattractive. She used to have yard sale, it was always like moving sale or whatever, I'm sure. Right, you know? And it's like now there's big containers sitting out and I'm like, like, just make it a little bit like presentable. Clean up your area. And I feel like is anything being done for something?
It's pretty hard to instill a sense of pride in people, yeah.
But there should be also a code. I feel like, uh, shouldn't be sitting out there, if you want it, hide it or, you know, I don't know. Um, I could come up with more, but I think that's probably, maybe the next, oh, I do have one thing. So through the, apparently the last Borough Council meeting, I heard that, and I don't know, please correct me if I understood that right. Apparently more people are coming in from different areas that are being enticed to come here to Louis Town. And I wondered if that is true?
Enticed how?
Cheeped a little here. Because I'm seeing changes in the area and I'm working also in the social field. So it's not, you know? And I wanna know why, why? Because when I ask my clients, I'm like, oh, how did you end up? He's like, oh, so and so, but they're never from this area. So I'm like, why this Louis Town, that place?
I could probably clue you into some of that. I'm aware of the fact that Mifflin County Commissioners, with the correctional facility contract to several different counties with, that are local like Snyder or Thumbberland Union. And my understanding is, we're talking with the individuals at the corrections department, that those, the people who are housed in the correctional facility are here for seven, eight, nine, twelve months. At least, at max, twelve months, I guess. And their families are moving here.
I see.
And I don't, I can't say that that explains all of the problem, but I think the changes that you and I are both seeing that are pretty evident are some of that, that they're moving here to be closer to their loved ones who are in jail.
Because it's becoming really unhealthy. And we having, we don't have a nice balance, we have a lot of, and I'm not against, we're low income, anybody can be in that. But we have a different, different pine tower, I'm gonna say. So we have more of those pine towers, like, and not enough, do I'm saying, like, just a balance, so.
I do.
Okay.
That's the best ex, best explanation I've heard so far as to why.
Yeah, yeah.
And it made sense.
Rich, can you explain to her why we need permits?
The ordinance requires permits for just about anything you're gonna do.
But who made, but who made that ordinance? Like, is it something that can be changed?
It's made of years.
Or it's just gonna always be changed?
The ordinance was first adopted in nineteen fifty-four.
I think they'll could, okay?
And these folks around this table could change them today, so desire, but I just endorse the ordinances that are there. I see somebody ordering a permit, I stop and knock on their door.
Can you give any clarity?
I agree with her. When I bought my house in nineteen eighty-three, it had a roof and had windows. They were single pane windows and I replaced them, but I had to get permits to upgrade and make my property look better. You know, so maybe something like that has to be looked into by council on some of the ordinances. I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep my place presentable by upgrading and making changes and, and make it look good, you know? Like my house and my neighborhood to look good. And when people do that, it, it keeps property values up and makes the, the whole area more presentable to entice business and people to move into the area.
And I also feel like if you're selling your house, like, I want, maybe eventually I wanna sell my house or naturally I wanna, you know, I wanna always keep it up to date, but I have to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if property value would, you know, be better when you do these upgrades. So maybe council does have to look at, at some of these changes, maybe for some of the codes.
This is something I've discussed many times and talked about a lot.
Thank you for time, for your time.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and some of the thing isn't even the homeowners or the people who live there. It's people who own the property that rent it out that just don't, they're getting their income, so many of those individuals, not all, but many of those individuals don't care. What's that?
Plus they don't reside.
They don't reside, that's for sure. But.
You can't put it all on rental.
I said not all, I said not all, yeah, yeah, not all.
There's homeowners too.
Absolutely.
My experience is people will do the best they can out.
With what they have.
With what they afford. That's, that's the only, that's, that's.
But there's other things that definitely could be considered.
Anyone else have anything they want to bring before council?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
I do have one more.
Okay.
So, so where I'm living, on South French Street, and I'm not, listen, I'm not against four wheelers or what have you. But for years now, there's on South Juniper Street, a four wheeler that's just riding around all the time, like in the summertime. And I feel like, isn't there a presence, like, against that? Like, should this not be out in the woods? If you wanna live out in the woods and wanna ride it, like, but, you know, so I'm wondering regarding.
Do you call the comm center?
I'm sorry?
Do you call the comm center, the nine-one-one center, when you see this happening? Are you aware of it?
No, I don't know if I've called for them.
You, you need to call them and make them aware so the police can address that issue.
So I do nine-one-one?
They have a, they have a non-emergency.
Yeah, I wouldn't, okay.
You need to call that and make them aware of it so the police can look into it.
Because I have to tell you, I've had another neighbor who was gonna ride motorcycle and police is sometimes washing, washing. Because one police officer goes and says, oh, you need to, you need to stop. And the next time the police off, another police officer says like, well, yeah, you, you can ride your motorcycle in your own backyard. And like, do I'm saying, they're not always on the same page, but I will, I will call.
Okay, you need to call, so they have a record of it.
Okay.
Well, is this something that is happening on their own property or you're saying they're out in?
On their own property, but in, well, I think they're using, would it be like the gas company's property as well? I mean, if you go back there, you can see there's like a trail.
You can see the trails from the trail.
As private property is one thing, but if we're out on roads.
Because isn't it private, private property, when it's in town, you have neighbors around?
Private property is private property.
Really? But isn't there loud waters? Because we're not talking about just mowing the lawn, we're talking about.
I, I know what you mean. I don't.
There is a noise ordinance in the borough.
I thought so.
They're giving the hall center that.
Your proper procedure to be to, to call up at the dispatch center and then report it. Then if it continues or something, come back to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we're gonna win the regular meeting and the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything on from the consent agenda that they want to, want to remove to discuss everything? If not, I have your motion to accept the, accept the consent agenda. Your motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda? Your motion to accept the consent agenda. Okay, we're gonna throw them one at a time. Approval of the minutes. Council meeting minutes of April ninth, April twenty-sixth, Law and Order Committee, Finance Committee, April twenty-sixth, Fire Committee, May the seventh, Streets Committee, May the tenth. Motion to accept them. Motion to make property second, question. All those in favor give their consent to saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Approval of the Trager's report. Motion made, property second to accept the Trager's report, question. All those in favor give their consent to saying aye? Both? See, approval to schedule bills. Your motion to accept that report.
I'll make the motion to accept that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, property second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye?
Aye.
Both? You know, it's received attached collect reported commissioned from March and April.
Second.
Motion made, property second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye? Both? No care. Approval of facility use forms. Record. Your motion to accept them. For a second.
I'll second.
Motion made, property second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye? Care. Digital facility use forms. Your motion to accept them. Your motion to accept them. Your motion to accept them.
I have questions about this.
I have questions about this. Why don't we waive the meet for the summer lunchbox series?
That was something that was done last year. And we just carried, we didn't, I mean if.
But we don't waive them for anybody else.
We didn't waive it. If you approve it, it's waived.
Okay. Excuse me, we'll take them one at a time. Approval of facility use forms through Lumen Center. Your motion.
Second.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye. Both. No carries. Summer lunchbox concert series. Your motion to accept them?
It's the concerts they do at the pavilion at the library during lunch hour on the twenty-first, the nineteenth, the dates that they have listed on their use form.
Anybody?
Anybody in the borough. Or anybody that wants to come, I guess, yeah, sorry.
If this is on their property, why is there a facility use fee? It's not, it's on borough's property. That gazebo is actually on the borough's property.
To accept that.
If they pay the, they pay the fee, I'd more than happily accept it.
Do I have mercy?
That was.
This, this is, this is what the fee way. I'm asking for a motion to accept.
Yeah, the letter says that it was waived years past. Said right there.
And I think this will be the third year for the summer lunchbox series.
Is there a motion to accept that?
I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to accept it. Having that.
Without the fees read.
Yeah.
But I understand what you're saying, Larry, that's not what's on the table, so.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if, if, if we don't get a motion to accept what's on this report, then they, then you can make that motion.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna ask one more time, which will be a third time. Does anyone want to make a motion to accept this?
With or without the fee, or with the fee?
With, as it's, as it's.
As it's presented, as it's.
Yes.
I'm gonna make that motion.
Okay. Anybody want to second that motion? Is there anyone wants to second the motion? Anyone want to second the motion? Okay, die through, five seconds. Okay, now, would you like to make a motion?
I would, I would like to make the motion that we accept the facility use form without fees being waived by the library.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Motion may properly second, granted. They, uh, permit, but they have to pay the fee. Would it be what?
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars. Question.
Did it go up?
Pardon?
Monthly event from one to three months.
Oh, because it's a monthly event, I see, okay.
Roll call, go ahead, please.
DeShay. And, and we're voting on accepting it with the fee?
With the charge, yes.
Yes. Mark Severs.
Yes.
Jim Townley.
No.
Dave Campbell.
Yes.
Joe Wilson.
Yes.
Mary Seer.
No. Okay. So they won't be charging the fee? Okay. Tri Valley Farmers Market for May to August on Thursdays and Saturdays.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both. No carries. Lady Patriots Girl Softball on May nineteenth, twentieth, June nineteenth, tenth, fourth, fifth, September eighth, ninth, Green Ager Softball Field.
That's the one down by Green Gables?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both. No carries. Cherry Shoemaker fifty of the anniversary. For Firefakers.
I'll make that motion accepted.
Motion made second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye. Both. No carries. Friends of the Embassy Theater on June the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
I'll make that motion.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both. Ignorance receipt of parking authority minutes March twenty-eighteen.
Similar.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both. No carries. Ignorance receipt of float data for April.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye. Both. Ignorance receipt of fame meeting minutes.
Similar.
Seconded.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye. Both. No carries. Ignorance receipt of certificate of destruction for documents at Borough.
Seconded.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye. Both. Ignorance receipt of business development committee meeting minutes.
Seconded.
Motion made second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both. Ignorance receipt twenty-fifteen and twenty-seventeen free and clear judicial sales. Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye. Both. Ignorance receipt of Brooklyn's nine ninety.
Is everything over?
Yes. Compared to nine nineties in the past, it's the same. So, yes.
Motion made second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye. Both. Treasurer's report.
Okay, so we received a request from Frank Finesio for thirty-two Grand Parkway. There was a broken water line that discharged water onto the street. Rex went in and he checked it out and confirmed it. Um, Frank was, uh, billed at the consumption of twenty thousand gallons, gallons, which cost him two hundred and eight, two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And his average consumption over the last four quarters is seven thousand gallons, which is a cost of seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. So I'm requesting council's approval to exonerate the difference of the twenty-one thousand gallons at the rate of one hundred and thirty-six oh eight and to bill him for the seventy-three seventy.
Seconded.
Motion may properly second, grant the request, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both. Approval of resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirty-five for D C E D Financial.
Um, I'm requesting council's approval for this resolution. So this set resolution, all it does is outlines the directive and procedures that we have to abide by, um, the D C B, in regards to any invoicing procedures that we have to do for pre-two thousand fourteen C E B G or any home grantees, since we still have the two thousand fourteen funds that were drawn down. All it does is establishes the procedure and I have to, after, if council still approves it, I just have to send it to D C B showing that we're doing our due diligence as their directive as they send them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both. No carries.
We received an exoneration request from the Board of Assessment Appeals for one thirty-three Shaw Avenue for Melvin Rodkey for two thousand eighteen borough taxes. Um, it says on the, um, letter that the parcel was partially destroyed due to a fire on April the fifth and that they are, he's requesting, um, it to be exonerated. Um, the borough's amount is two forty-seven seventy-five.
Is that for the whole year or for the?
No, it says that, um, yeah, the parcel will be rebuilt for a reduced amount with the upcoming school building. So it's just for, yeah.
Do we have an update on the property correction?
One thirty-one and one thirty-three are supposed to be coming down. And I'm still waiting on the insurance company for one twenty-seven.
And we're saying they're gonna be rebuilt, that you're saying?
No, they're gonna be leveled. Be vacant lots.
Does anyone speak?
Um, yeah, I think that's what it says.
Council wishes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion may properly second, question. Your consent to say an aye. In favor?
Aye.
Both.
We received a letter from the Tax Plan Bureau of Missland County for the property at four thirty-four West Forest Street. Um, there was an offer received in the amount of three hundred dollars for this particular property. This property was placed in the repository for untold properties, um, in order to know what council's wishes were if they want to accept the, the, the offer or to reject it.
Where is this property? What is four thirty-four?
Across from West End Store, like, California, a little bit.
Is that right?
Vacant house, it's been sheriff sold, booked, sold and.
Red house.
And it means that people want to buy and, and fix it up. So I would strongly recommend.
Yeah, this gets it back on the tax laws, that's the benefit of the borough now, it's just sitting there. Getting a tax rate.
Council wishes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion may properly second, question. All those in favor give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Both.
The last thing I wanted to say is that we received our financial audit for the year ending in two thousand seventeen for all our finances and then also for the wastewater treatment plant financials. And I have copies here for everyone, if they would like, I have bound copies. So if you would like, just let me know.
All right, thank you. Code of Justice.
Last month, there was thirty-two violations, found fifteen of those gardenings and lakes. Uh, three of them are properties I've been down for on the block conceived due to no water, power, or service. There were sixty-four permits issued last month of the zoning fee like the two hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighteen cents and seven hundred and sixty dollars in sidewalk permits issued. And that brings our zoning fees collected for the year to sixteen thousand nine hundred and ten sixty-nine and our sidewalks to one thousand two hundred. April's improvements in the borough was two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars. It makes sense. And that brings us year to date to one million seven hundred and five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars for the permits. Under inspection fees that were going in-house, we collected four hundred and fifteen dollars last month. And that brings us up to eleven hundred dollars fifteen, which had started to climb even already this month. People are going to things in inspection. And then we received one Loma letter. And also, if your place, you all should have the access survey. Last month, they asked me to give quotes. Uh, I reached out to three different surveyors. One responded back a week, two weeks later saying he was too busy. The second one, uh, said he would give me something, but then last week, his wife took the old down in Florida, so he had to take off for Florida for her. So I only ended up with one. And he gave a not to exceed price of sixty-five hundred dollars to try and figure this mess out that long ago.
They'd agree to have something compared to.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can do that. This is what we were discussing with, okay, has anybody, I mean, pulled a deed and physically looked at this thing just to see, I mean, we're, I, I can't imagine jumping in to spend enough to six thousand dollars if we could at least look at a deed for free first.
I mean, we can get you the deed, but it's not going to answer the question as to where the watches are.
Well, you're just gonna work age and face it here because he's been disagreeing about stepping it back and forth.
Okay.
Council wishes, do anything or?
We've asked, we've asked.
And so you give that, somebody else.
Just to know, so.
Okay.
Have that for next one.
Well, Mr. President, related to that, because I shouldn't make this up. We run into some deals down there once in a while where people have like campfires or whatever. So I get a call at home to get down and investigate the smoke from campfires. But snow open fires were committed in the part of Lewis Town. Now, the problem I'm running into is for time to time, the caller Roxie's came down with me. There, we have a section of ground down in there, it's part of the dairy township, that's part of this Bramble Township, some Bramble Township property comes across the side river.
Yes.
So I kind of ran into a thing here now, I'm not sure.
Where it is?
Yes, and I'm probably telling people, making people put their old campfires out to, to legally have them there.
Yeah, the same ground down Victor Park, or Bramble Township, the other way. Trying to. Survey always resolve the chief's questions to.
Well, what, you, you gonna get another bid, Rex?
Yeah, I'll get another, reach out to somebody else who can get another proposal for next month.
Okay. In the meantime, what she's supposed to do is.
Call me. I'm both calling.
If I call him and we try to come to a mutual agreement with the people that's having the fire, unfortunately, so far they've been willing to put them out for us to save the hassle, but someday that's not gonna happen.
Any, any other questions for Rex of Code Department? Reported fire case.
Okay, last month, fire department ran twenty-two alarms plus medical assists. Uh, nothing of real significant damage, although I did have to get Roxie in a couple of times to take care of some health, fire and safety issues. Uh, also, all three fire companies was involved in the kid connection, they had a good time, kids had a good time. They all went rather well. Uh, myself and a couple of members of fire department went and put on a fire safety. Myself and a couple members of fire department went and put on a fire safety and fire prevention program for skills. We done a program for 37 assisted living people, it was a good time, a good deal, and I'm sure they learned a lot out of it. Also, at last meeting or two, there was concern about the Fireman's Lea operations. So, I just want to announce tonight that come May the 24th, the auditors are coming in to do their regularly scheduled audit of Fireman's Lea books. And last week, the secretary at Fireman's Lea, myself, and around all three stations, we took inventory of everything that's under Fireman's Lea and such. I want to touch on this briefly, too. When, June the 1st, will be the 50th anniversary of the worst tragedy we ever had in Lewis Town Fire Department. Back in June the 1st, 1968, we had three bar firefighters coming out of Reedville and silo explosion. Give you a little bit on that, and I know the president knows something about it, Jim was heavily involved that day, he knows a lot about it. But we had three junior firemen, two from the street up the ladder, and one from the vein. They was called out to a possible silo fire in Reedsville. City's ladder trucks dispatched, and when they get out there, these three guys, the first three, go up the ladder. The one had just stepped off the end of ladder when it topped the silo. The second was on the top rung, ready to start off, and there's another, three runs down from him. The explosion occurred, all three was blown off the silo, and all three were deceased. And my days around here, that's probably, that's the worst day we ever had in Lewis Town Fire Department. While we gave the consent to Sherry Shoemaker to use Rec Park on June, or, I'm sorry, Victory Park on June the 2nd, we're gonna go and put a memorial service together, supposed to get a memorial service for these three guys. I've had a couple meetings with some people, other state fire commissioners wanna be here to give a speech, the ex-state fire commissioner's gonna be here. A couple guys that fought fire with these guys 50 years ago are gonna be involved and do some speaking. We're gonna take the tower trucks down there and set up the arches, fly the flag. We have a vehicle player coming in, bike piker. You know, we always make the commitment, we'll never forget, so we want to show everybody we do not forget these guys. And this is gonna be open to everybody. We're gonna have another meeting Wednesday night as soon as we get everything put together. I'm gonna advertise a little bit through Lewis Town Fire Department's Facebook page, and you can help us out on there, too. And Dave, you can help us out, you advertise a little bit, your Facebook page. So, this is something we want to do, and so we owe it to these guys, and thanks for your support for a bunch of useful ideas.
Any questions for the fire people? Mayor to report.
I just wanted to also make a comment about both the Kid Connections and the ceremony at Rec, yeah, at Victory Park, I'm sorry. The Kid Connection was awesome. I know there's always a committee that works on it, since I walked around there, I could see the work that was involved there. There were a lot of happy children there and parents, and every committee needs a leader, and Venus is the leader. And I wanted to personally thank her for all the work, that was a lot of work to do, but it was such a, such a nice day, and everybody had such a great time, so thank you for doing that. Sherry Shoemaker had come to me a while back about this, and she's very passionate about, about the ceremony at Victory Park. So, I hope that through the advertising that we can do, that we can get a nice, nice group of people down there, 'cause we certainly want to remember these three gentlemen, it was such a sad, I remember when that happened, and it was a sad, sad situation, so we need to come out and support, support that program also.
Is that it?
Yes.
Any questions for the mayor? Please, Chief.
In April, we had 258 calls for service, or guys responded to. There were 658 parking tickets, 562 of those were street sweeper. 52 citations, traffic citations, 18 non-traffic citations, and seven warnings. Two of those incidents we had in April were pretty serious, attempted homicides. I want to thank the, first of all, some of the citizens of the community for calling in, giving us information on these incidents, which helped us to resolve them. The fire company and the chief was very responsive when we asked them for assistance. In one of the incidents, we had to look for a gun that was tossed, a loaded handgun, and told them the chief, and the next day, we had about, I don't know, probably 30 or over, guys that came out and helped us book, and, you know, assisted us with another incident as well, so appreciate all the assistance we got there. And we were able to resolve both of those incidents, and we have paid arrest in both the attempted homicide incidents, and those subjects are both incarcerated, so. The other thing I'd like to mention is tomorrow is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and they have a big ceremony in Washington, we have a year for that. There's actually a wall down there with the names of peace officers who have lost their lives over the years. Probably throughout history, there's been about 21,541 officers that have lost their lives. Unfortunately, that continues to grow every year. May of this year, there were 51 fatalities in the United States and two of them in Afghanistan, so. At least keep that in mind this one.
Will there be anything going on here tomorrow?
We're not doing anything here locally, but they do have the National Memorial tomorrow, and that is televised as well, so. But, you know, these guys go out there and put their lives on the line every day, and, you know, we need to at least remember that, at least for tomorrow. But, that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Rec Board?
We have, I think you approved all the things that we needed approved. The prevailing issue is still running for minutes. But we also have Jackie Folds, who is our pool manager, and she would like to share a few comments with the borough council.
Yeah, this is, for all of you who don't know who she is, this is Jackie Folds. Jackie, how many days have you been out of Bloomsburg University for the summer now?
Not even a week, yeah.
Not even a week. She looked at the pool and thought it looks bad, and she's ready to get that wound up next weekend. But she had come before Rec Board and had to ask where the approved wage for the pool manager was, $11 an hour. And Jackie had come to the Rec Board and said that she would really like to make $12 an hour, and I explained how the finance committee worked, and that we felt a 10% increase was substantial, sufficient. And she said, why do I really like to come and address council? I said, have at it, so here she is.
So, this is my fourth year at Rec Park, and the first two years there, I made $9.50, and then last year, I made $10 an hour. And Brett Leester made $12.05 last year as pool manager, and it was only his second year at Rec. So, I'm kind of, you know, would like to make the same wage as him, if not more, just because it is my fourth year here. I know the pool inside and out, and it's kind of insulting to have a lower wage than a guy who's only been there for two years.
Jackie might also tell you that she's also going to be in the rotation, so keep in mind that she is going to also guard along with being pool manager, so keep that in mind.
As far as lifeguards go, there were 16 people who applied, but only, only 12 are gonna remain. So, we have 12 lifeguards who would like to stay. We have one girl who would like to work the front desk for minimum wage, and of the lifeguards, only eight of them will be full-time.
Well, that, the girl that is gonna be working the front desk, she's also available if needed as a lifeguard, correct?
No. No, she decided not to get her lifeguarding certification because she can work the front desk.
So, she's gonna do that instead?
Yes.
And your 12 lifeguards, does that include you, Jackie?
No.
Okay.
So, I would rather like.
But you'd be in the rotation?
I would rather try to keep myself out of the rotation, just because I can fill in when I need to, and I want the kids to get their hours. There's not a lot of hours in the day, we're only open from 12 to 5. To have them there half hour early, clean, half hour later, you know, to keep more, patterns are disgusting after a day, so they need to clean afterwards. So, I have six hours in a day, and between all of them, you know, that's not a whole lot of wage.
And what happens if it rains, and the pool closes, they just go home, correct?
Yep, they just go home.
No one gets paid for the day?
Or if they, if you see, look at AccuWeather, and you see the storm coming, and they won't even open, you just call them and it just.
Right.
Most of the time if it rains, will like spray, will hose down the bathrooms, just so the kids have something to do and make up that wage.
To see if it passes or something?
Yes, see if it passes, make up that wage, you know, instead of having them stay after and like adding more to their weekly hours.
Right. We had a discussion from the onset, Jackie and I, about the importance of expense control in the pool. And she is fully aware of exactly how the pool is gonna do financially, and what it's gonna take to improve the performance this year.
And I know that you have some ideas on some ways that we can get.
Um, swimming parties, we do swim lessons for two weeks, we could increase that if people, you know, want to have swim lessons. I've also thought of like family evenings, because we're only open until 5:00. So, maybe one day a week, we could be open from 6:00 to 8:00, have three lifeguards, you know?
It'll make you happy.
It would make me happy, and I'm sure I'm not the only person that would be happy in the borough.
I feel like that might interest people more to come to the pool, because I know boroughs not open that late. They're open as late as we are.
Six, right.
I think they're only until 5:00, 5:30.
What's council's wishes? Is there a motion, is there a motion to pay her $12 an hour? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second to the motion, pay her $12 an hour? Is there a second to the motion? Go ahead, one more time. Is there a second to the motion? My apologies to you, but there's no second to the motion, so. Any other questions for Mary or Rec Board? Or you, you still have more to report, Mary?
No, no, I just, the things on our agenda was the letting and approval of the, the letting reception.
Yeah, I think that's. I think that's in here, or, I'll be seeing it somewhere.
Mary, can you bring up about the Marcella Schell grant? We talked about that.
Our wishes were that there is a Michelle, Michelle Scher grant, and we are asking approval from borough council, use this to repair the roofs on all the pavilions at Rec Park. So, we need your approval to submit for the grant, so that we can use the grant for repairing of the roofs.
Rec Board, or county gets this money, and they divvy it up, and you have to put a proposal together. And our proposal would be for the rehabbing the roofs on the three pavilions down at Rec Park. And, correct me if I don't have the numbers correct, but there's about $6,000 that would be our own labor. So, we would be providing the $6,000 worth of labor. Not hiring anybody additional, it would just be $6,000 of our workforce hours. I think it was 120 hours, Tim?
Yes, two weeks, yes.
We go towards that, I think, what's the, the material cost around $1,800?
Yeah, the paint alone was 22.
28. Okay.
You have a budget of $3,600 if you replace it in the roof. Would it hurt $600?
I don't remember much.
Yeah.
So, this would be, instead of, we put it for the grant, which would pay for the materials, and we wouldn't have to spend that money.
I mean, how quick does that turn around?
Quick, we'll put it in by the end of the month, and we'll go by the end of June.
How quick do these first lines?
Quick, I mean, we just go buy the materials and give them the receipts, and they write us a check. We could, last year, we, so last year or two years ago, Tim?
Two.
Two years ago, we put in for a grant, we got approved, and put the handicap accessible ramp in for the swimming pool. Like, if you look at the entrance, the one that goes down towards the tennis courts. I guess we're looking for a motion to.
But the, we're looking for rooms on pavilions, it's not a condition, I guess.
If council wishes to apply for this grant.
I'll make the motion that we apply for the grant, and the 20s be used to rehab the roofs on the pavilions at Rec Park.
You're second?
I'm second.
Motion may properly second, questions? All those in favor give their consent and say an aye.
Aye.
Pardon? Burris, a listen. Did you have anything else, Mary?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Hey, can I ask you a question? Is, Mary?
Yes.
One question, is, oh, one of your council, that I put on my board.
Matt Moore.
Is Matt Moore attending the meetings or not?
No, he hasn't been here the last two years now.
You know, you had asked me to put everyone, I did. And he's not showing up?
He hasn't showed up, he, oh, he didn't show up the last two meetings, I don't think.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Burris, a listen.
Thank you. At Law and Ordinance's past meeting, we discussed some changes in the ordinance due to fines. And it was recommended that that be advertised. We discussed this at council last time, and council wanted Law and Ordinance to look at it again. Would council like me to go through the proposed changes, or do you remember what's in it? If you want me to, just go ahead and.
Is that what you're, was it cost shitty first, and what the ordinance read for, or is it something else?
This has to do with like, for, like, when Rex does a building roof violation, the ordinance currently says not more than $1,000. Now, we're saying not less than $300, plus the amount of any unpaid violation tickets. They're all, they're all meant to bring our ordinance fine amounts more in line with the cost that actually has, you know, staff and outside consultants to come in there and enforce those ordinances. So, we're increasing the fines for building plumbing, electrical and property maintenance codes for acid weeds, refuse collection, snow, and, yeah, snow and ice removal, and sweet stripper parking. So, those, those are the ones that we are increasing based on recommendations from staff to the ones that were the most needed to be addressed. So, what I'm looking for is approval, go ahead and advertise those for adoption next month.
What's council's wishes?
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve this for advertising.
Motion may properly second to advertise, questions? All those in favor give their consent and say an aye.
Aye.
Pardon? No.
Are we gonna do another executive session?
Yes, we are.
Okay. One case to talk about in the air, but that's, that's all I have for regular.
Okay, Burman.
Okay, I wanted to start out and remind you all of the Charles Street Bridge closing effect of June 3rd. A little bit more update for you on this, quite interesting, we've not spent its money. That bridge was originally slated to be sand blasted and painted, but due to the cost of containment, containing the sand blasting and the painting in relationship to the creek, it was, it was cheaper to knock the bridge down and rebuild it than it was to sand blast and paint it. There you go, that's the rest of the story as Paul Harvey says. But June third, they're going to start, they're going to work seven days a week and their goal is to have it done by the middle of August because school's starting like the twenty-first of August this year. Got some great news on the swimming pool concession stand. Sean Wiltz from Wiltz Vending and his wife and two daughters have, uh, signed up to run the concession stand this year. So that's fabulous. We didn't have that concession stand up and running until about the twenty-third or twenty-fourth of June last year, so it's going to be great to have them on board right from the onset. Uh, the fire department study is in, in the works. Um, we met with DCED on a conference call last month, Bill and I did. Uh, we've been assigned a guy by the name of John Semph who was, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, he was the head of York Fire Department?
Retired Fire Chief from York.
Okay. And we've been, between the three of us, we've been sending all kinds of information on the local three fire companies. So that's where we are on the update of that. Any questions on the fire study? Okay, uh, year-to-date financials through the end of April, this is a way overview, but basically, general borough, uh, revenue is up five point two percent. Expenses are down a half a percent, so the total revenue over expenses is up sixty-seven percent over the year before, roughly ninety thousand dollars. And we've used seventy percent of our budget, which at the end of April, we should have been at sixty-six percent of our budget. Refuse, revenue's up six point nine percent, expenses are up one percent, the revenue over expenses is up thirty-two percent. Waste water collection is up six percent in revenue, uh, expenses are up one point seven percent. Revenue over, revenue over expenses is up eighteen percent and wastewater treatment, revenue is down two percent, expenses are down five, but because of the large numbers, the revenue over expenses has increased from forty-six to thirty-two, from thirty-two thousand to forty-six thousand. So totally, we're up about a hundred and fifty thousand revenue over expenses over fiscal two thousand seventeen. Any questions on that? Okay, and lastly, I have a, I mentioned briefly when we were talking about the Kiss Street and Manor Drive project. One of the things that we weren't able to do because of the grant that we received from DCED was to do a study and put in a traffic signal at the intersection of Green Avenue and Kiss Street. So we looked at, had Lucas put together a proposal on, in conjunction with this, doing a study, a traffic study on that intersection. With the idea, the Arlie Grant, um, what's the deadline, Lucas, the end of May or the end of June?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. We wanted to do the study, which is eight thousand dollars. We have enough money that we could carve out of the seven hundred thousand we have for that project. And if it proves that we need a light to put in for the Arlie Grant, to have the Arlie Grant pay for the light, which is around three hundred thousand dollars. So what I'm asking is, well, Lucas, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Um, no, just what I also do is, uh, if we do get to go ahead tonight, we get to put the traffic counters out and get the school buses input into the intersection. Um, we have, you know, obviously till about May thirty-first, right? If we did get to go ahead, we'd get them out right next Wednesday, Thursday. Get that data back and download it and then we would know one way or another whether it does warrant a traffic signal, um, you know, where everybody's got a pretty good inkling that it will. That will allow us to work with Pendott through the month of June, uh, for your June council meeting and, and proceed with the Arlie Grant, uh, for the red light enhancement. And add that to our total project for Kiss Street for the rest of the year.
Probably, uh, the major downside on that, the grant's what, fifty-fifty?
No, the Arlie Grant, um, it's actually one hundred percent. The, the Arlie Grant is one hundred percent. They, they do like it if you put up money worth that. And that's where we sort of felt, um, and in some preliminary conversations with Pendott, the fact that we already have the seven hundred thousand for Kiss Street with buying from Geisinger and the Borough, that we're already on the way, we already have a project in the works. And if this study comes back that the traffic signal was warranted, um, then we can just roll that three hundred thousand or whatever they award us right into the hole. Improve that entire, um, area down through Kiss Street, so. And if, and if it comes back and a traffic signal is not warranted, then we've at least done our due diligence and we can go back to everyone who, including ourselves, have been complaining about the traffic congestion. At this point, we'll, we'll have a sort of a basis moving forward that any new development or changes in the area take place, we can have a, a good starting point from here.
Eight thousand.
It's not to exceed- Yeah, not to exceed eight thousand.
We have, the thing that we've had, uh, people question, I mean, we're going to spend seven hundred thousand and a lot of people were in favor of putting a light, which, I mean, the, the total project was one point one million and we had to give somewhere and it was the light. So we felt that we need, we needed to at least prove to ourselves that one, either a light isn't needed or if it's needed, go down a different avenue fundraising-wise and make it happen.
And in the end, even if it doesn't fully warrant a traffic signal, we can look, look at left turn lanes and some other options to help with traffic congestion, uh, see what comes out of that. So it's, it's sort of a starting point.
We would be on the hook for parts of that traffic signal. Well, we would be on the hook, but it would be coming out of money that we already have for that, the seven hundred thousand we have for that. It were a shortfall. We haven't got to cover it, have we? Oh, yeah. We, I mean, we, I mean, again, we have a, we have a, some built-in work because of the, you know, cost runs, um, overall runs, I guess. But we started, that project was originally one point one because we came in lower, or the money we got from DCED was lower than what we expected. So we made some necessary cuts to get it down to the seven hundred thousand dollar project.
Motion made, probably second.
To do a traffic study.
Do a traffic study, is your second?
I'll second it.
Motion made, probably second. Questions? Roll call, please.
Nina Shane?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Jim Bowley?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Phil Wilson?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
No.
That's all I have.
Uh, before we go into unfinished and new business, we have an alcohol policy here that we didn't take separately. If we need to for a quirky weed or, it's on, uh, October thirteenth. We should have a, a, because it's going to be alcohol syrup, we should have a separate. Okay, for that.
I'll make the motion, you're perfect.
Motion made, probably second. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? May. Okay, under, I want to finish the new business, approval to release twenty fifteen- Did, is that missed or? Okay. Approval to release twenty fifteen CDBG funds for salary reimbursement in the amount of four thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars seventy-seven cents. And twenty sixteen CDBG funds for materials and supplies in the amount of eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Seconded.
Motion made, probably second. Question? All those in favor, give your consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares? Approved Stefan Russell removal from the police advisory board due to him serving on the planning commission.
When I, uh, when I spoke with Stefan, he said he wanted to stay on the police advisory board.
Oh, he wants to stay on there?
Oh, he wants to stay on the-
Unless he, yeah, unless he contacted somebody-
No, he didn't. So he wants it the opposite way then. He wants to get off the planning commission?
Right.
Okay, we can do it that way.
Okay, so it'll be for the removal from the planning commission.
Right. His name is Stefan instead of Stephen.
Stefan.
Yeah, it's S.T.E.F.A.N.
No.
Stefan.
No.
Yeah, so's my name.
What's it? S.T.E.F.A.N.?
Uh, yeah, Stefan.
What's council's wishes?
I'll make the motion.
Yes, I'll second.
Motion made, probably second, remove him from the planning commission. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval to appoint Telvin Fisher to the police squad, we can't do that now.
Well, do we have a vacancy on that?
Yeah, there is another vacancy.
There's another vacancy. That's why I thought he was going off. So that's why I thought Stefan or Stephen or whatever, Mr. Russell is actually-
We have a vacancy on.
So we have-
There's another vacancy besides-
Yeah, the Fisher will take care of the other vacancies that we have.
Approval to appoint Telvin Fisher to the police advisory board by resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, probably second. Questions? Roll call, please.
Nina Shane?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Jim Bowley?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Phil Wilson?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Okay, Bill, you're up, finance chairman.
First thing we're going to try and vote through is approval of new time clock that we need down at the, down at the garage, is that where it's at? We approved it through finance, just need to approve it, uh, through council.
You say finance, okay with that?
Let's find out on the last user, point something out about that.
Oh, yes, we can pick off these. Yep, not a problem.
Motion made, probably second. Per the new time clock, question? All those in favor, give your consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Uh, we're looking for approval for WEX program. It's a credit card that could save us the possible twenty-five hundred dollars for the year.
This is a, it's a Co-Stars program.
Okay.
And it basically opens up, right now, we've already asked from Minmart and Snadickers, but we don't get any discount on the rack price of fuel, we just get it tax-free. So this program, as discussed in finance, gives us the opportunity to have savings off our gas price that we purchased. To give you an idea, last year, we bought a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, a hundred and fifty-six dollars worth of fuel. So just a one point eight five percent savings, which doesn't sound like a lot, it was twenty-five hundred and thirty-five dollars savings. The other nice thing about the card, each card is, it's done for the user of the card. In other words, what I mean by that is, say you work in the, um, streets department and you work six-thirty to three, I think is the time that they work down there. If you go to get gas at six AM or three-thirty, it won't work. So it has to be within the timeframes of when the employee's working, one. Two, when they go to get gas, they have to put in a, a personal code that you need the individual. And three, you have to put in the odometer, which we currently do. So there's a couple of extra checkpoints involved, but, um, just the fact that we can save some additional funds, I think it's, uh, a good thing. In this, in the county right now, Granville currently uses the WEX program. And I spoke with the people within it, Co-Stars, and they speak extremely highly of it. So it'd be-
You can still get gas, but probably just-
You can get gas anywhere, pretty much anywhere in Nifflin County. Antiques is included in this as well. Can I say something? How's that going to work for overtime? They going to work for overtime in snow removal? Tim, the advantage is that the car, we can change it by just picking up the phone and, and I trust that I want your snow plows to, to plow. But that's what percent of the three hundred and sixty-five days? Very small percent.
So if the roads don't get cleared this winter, you can get fuel scotched in.
I need change too.
The other one question also, is that a fact part of any because, um, we have cars and we get built tomorrow morning.
You will, you will be on this program?
We'll be on the program.
Yep.
So each of you goes a driver, that time's going to be in his own, that number rather than using one for the rig.
I mean, we can do it that way too, but we can put it in there as the rig, but I would recommend that we do it in by individual.
That'd be the safest way.
You want it by individual?
Yeah.
Okay, they, they'll be involved in that. What's council's wishes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made, probably second, approval of WEX program. Questions? All those in favor, give your consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Favor, approval?
For approval for purchase of cyber security insurance from AC Kirkstatter? With the additional cost of nine hundred and ninety-two dollars for our insurance.
Do you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, I highly recommend the cyber insurance being the fact that, um, you know, borough's responsible for all the online data, no matter where it's stored. And where it can be held liable for, for the data, um, if it's compromised. Because we have credit card numbers, we've got social security numbers, we've got driver's license numbers, so if any of that gets compromised, it actually puts the burden on the insurance company, not on the borough. So I highly recommend we pick this coverage up.
Motion for second.
Motion made, probably second. Question? All those in favor, give your consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions for finance? JR, you're up, Law and Ordinance.
Okay, so we have an issue where our guys go, um, to unclog a trap, which is part of your sewer line, it's out by the street in front of each of your houses or apartments, whatever. And when they go to do that, these vent covers are cemented shut. So we, um, Law and Ordinance, we're seeking approval from council to add a fifty-dollar fee when our guys have to go out and put time and money into freeing up these vent covers, which essentially would-
In other words, when, when people redo their sidewalks, right, Bill?
Yeah.
You get a bit, you know what the little bit, it's not supposed to be included with the adherence of the concrete. It's supposed to be forged in and then you drop it in place so it can pull it off. We had one, well, we had a couple, but the, the, um, collection crew goes out and they need to get the back there in the pipe. And the only way to do that is to get the cap off, so you have to cut the concrete to get the, the cap out so we can use the back to, to clear the pipes. How often does it happen, JR?
Like frequently lately, I mean, the new guy, the sidewalk is still going. It's not even used with the back there, it's to do our visual inspection to determine whose responsibility it is to, at the same time.
Yeah, and it's just, it's time of money.
It's our, essentially, it's the homeowner's action at the same time, and whenever it's in that minute, we can't do our job.
So.
JR, you may.
Good job, you have screen done.
They do know.
I'll make that motion down.
And some of them, one on Valley Street, that's the concrete, it's been there for 25 years, it's not an end, but there are problems. Sewer line is blocked and it come up on the sidewalk, we need an identity.
Most made properly second, 35 bucks.
Story's over, I got one other question. What happens when you remove that, is any damage done to the sidewalk? Who's responsible?
The, the way it is now, we make every effort possible to contact the homeowner.
I understand, but if that happens, we damage the sidewalk, we're liable for removing it.
I mean, we would probably be liable, but the, what do we do? We only go to a house that we're called to, right, JR? I mean, we don't just, the one on Valley Street, the sewage was coming up and running down the sidewalk, so that's, you don't have a choice.
We're in, I think, we're in by somebody else or the homeowner, okay? Whenever you have sewage running down the street.
Then it's, you don't have a choice, we don't have a choice.
And, and I think if the people have their vent in, they're in violation of our own, it's not an ordinance, but it's the sidewalk, what do they call it?
I just want to make sure liability's not enough, I don't want to go around asking for sidewalks.
No, neither do I, not that we're getting someone to play this.
You don't say liability there, Mark?
No, I mean, because like I said, they're already in violation of Borough regulation by having it cemented in.
Any other questions? All those in favor give a consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Law and ordinance is also seeking approval to advertise a rolling agreement for the 2016 CDBG and subsequent years ordinance. Mark, you can probably explain the fee side of this better than.
Yeah, if you've been on council for a while, you're, you're aware of this whole CDBG thing. For municipalities the size of Lewistown, the state has said you have to have, the county administer your CDBG funds. Many years ago, Aaron used to do it for the Borough, that was part of her job. Now we don't have to have, we don't have to pay someone to do that, we pay the county to do it. The way we do that is we pay a 15% fee to the county, which we negotiated down from 18%. When this first happened back in fiscal year 2015 or 15, it was councils wished to do it for one year rather than to have it just be a contract that continues. So now we're, we're at the point where we've only really ever approved one year. The county has continued to administer the grant for fiscal year 2016 and 2017, but for a number of reasons, we should have an agreement in place with the county. This was advertised for adoption a couple of months ago, it failed, law and ordinance has recommended once again that it be advertised once again for consideration by Borough Council.
The advantage is, one, every year we have to advertise this, and every year Mark has to spend his time putting another agreement together, which costs the Borough money versus.
And re-advertise.
Yeah, and it re-cha, so what we're, what we're doing with this is saying, it can be canceled at any time by any party, but it's going to be a rolling five-year agreement at the 15%. Unless we gain approximately 2,000 residents, we're going to continue to have to use the county to solicit the CDBG money. And unless you guys want to continue to spend money year after year doing the same thing, the recommendation was of law and ordinance to just bite the bullet, put the agreement in place with the codicil that anybody, either party can't, the county or the Borough, could cancel the contract at any time.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. They, we have to use them, there's no one else we can use.
Yeah, we're, it costs the Borough approx, approximately $18,000, but it cost us about $58,000 before because we were paying somebody full-time to do this. So it's really, it's a tremendous deal. I don't, I could tell too many people that might have an in with the county that we're getting a great deal, but we are getting a great deal.
I, I did check with the county, your advertising fees would be reimbursable out of your CDBG money, I would choose to do it that way. It's just, I guess it depends on what party you're paying out of.
What's council wishes?
What he meant by that was, we're still gonna, it'll just be less money that we have in CDBG. So if the ad costs $500, it's going to be paid out CDBG, but that's $500 in addition to the 15%. It's not out of the 15%.
Or we can pay it once, a couple, a couple.
Yeah.
Or a couple.
Does anybody have any questions about this? I mean, I know it failed last time, I knew there was some discussion.
Well, I think the, it was brought up about renegotiating, but I think that we've all discussed that that's, we're already getting a lower.
What's council wishes?
I'll make the motion that we advertise a rolling agreement for CDBG monies for subsequent years.
I'll second. Second.
Hi.
Mark, seconded.
Sorry, I didn't hear it, Mark. Most made properly second, question?
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Can the county rebuttal this?
Pardon?
Can the county rebuttal this? They weren't too happy about dropping from, from 15, from 18 to 15, can they?
This is the agreement we have.
Then we're, we're agreeing to whatever they charge for like five years of pay.
No, 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 no.
No, no, fifteen.
We're, we're agreeing to 15% per year for the next five years.
Yeah, so can they, can they come back?
At any time.
Scott and I haven't had the chance to talk to county staff about this. I mean, I think there's a very good chance that this will be accepted by the county. I think it'll be fine. I mean, ultimately, you have three county commissioners who vote on this, but I, I don't have any reason to think that it's going to be a problem.
All those in favor give a consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Any other questions for law and ordinance?
I, it's, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to ask while we're here because it was a discussion in law and ordinance committee about boarding burning houses in the Borough. How many do we have in Borough?
Seven, I believe. Didn't become seven?
I think there's seven.
And I have a, do you have a list that you gave? Have you sent me?
Six, seven. So we have seven boarding houses.
There's seven here, and he says there's one more that did not have any incidents, so eight.
Okay, so we have a substantial crime problem that's surrounding these boarding houses. I mean, it's in black and white, that's, and I, I don't know what the answer is there, but.
We have to look at how we regulate them.
Have you talked about this law and ordinance?
We did talk.
We did. I mean, we're talking.
It was tabled for.
Yeah, because we ran out of room, our time, so.
I mean, we're talking overdoses, we're talking burglaries, deaths, narcotics charges, fraud, assault. I mean, the one incident, the one major incident we had in April.
Was outside.
That gentleman was, was staying in.
That in one of the boarding houses.
And the issue is, these guys, the owner of this property worked against law enforcement to try to solve a very substantial crime in our community, and that doesn't sit well with, with me, but I, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, it's easy to just to say ban boarding houses. I mean, this, this is insane.
I think you need to sit down, solicit and talk about the good things in some way.
I, I, I agree, and there's over 120 incidents, and if you look at the dates of the incidents that, that you gave me, Dave, you'll see that the majority of them have occurred in the last two years, the ones that are more substantial, and I think it's a direct correlation of the individuals that are moving into our community for other reasons, going back to what we were talking about in Elica, so.
There, again, I, I think that's something needs to down, solicit law and ordinance.
Yeah, we need to look at the ordinance and how.
Steven, you can do with the.
Yeah, same effect, law and ordinance.
Yeah.
We'll work on that, Dave.
Any other questions for law and ordinance? Okay, Bill, streets committee. Okay, looking for approval to remove the yellow curb in front of Water Authority on Justice. Invite the signs will be in place for no parking between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, but after that they'll be able to park because there will not be any yellow curb. What's council wishes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Most made properly second, remove the yellow line, keep the parking sign as is, no parking 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Question?
What, what's this yellow line put there for to be.
When they, when they first, when they first put that in, I think that's when the, the yellow line was put in there.
There are issues there, when they come out the driveway, they stay there most of the time, I'm sure.
But the sign would still prevent people from parking.
That's correct, for express buses in first place. There's a liability to park.
Would it freeze up spaces for residents that live there to have people parked in evenings and such?
All those in favor, give a consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares?
Okay, looking for approval in front of the courthouse, take the handicap space from Wayne Street, move it to Third Street by the handicap ramp where it should have been. And that's, that's all they're gonna want at this time is just one.
There's currently a handicap spot, the very first one, we come from the red light on Wayne Street. They're gonna take that spot and move it around to Third Street where we enter the courthouse where the handicap ramp is, so that it's right there in front.
So they're just gonna take out one of the.
It'll just take, the, oh, it is moving it from Third, from Wayne Street to Third Street, and still have the same number, there's one across the street on Third Street, from the NX.
Right.
But isn't, isn't that where the parking is for the 30 minutes? I mean, you pull in and.
Yeah, there, there's, behind that spot would be where.
Okay.
There's still places for parking for county business.
Okay.
We're allowed so many handicap spaces or?
In the county?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're just moving one to another, or we just.
It's up to council.
Really? Okay. Were you getting adding one?
Yeah. The original request was for two, and there's a, the committee's feeling was, there's a new flower shop that's going in like five doors down on the right side of the street, and there's a lot of county employees that park there now where the retail business is going. So to, their thinking was not to give another handicap spot this time since they had one across the street, and I spoke to Lonnie Griffin at the county, and he said that the one would be fine and they'll watch the one across the street and see how that's used, and if it's not being used enough, then they'll move that over as their second space.
Council wishes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Most made properly second, relocate the handicap park based in court. Question? All those in favor give a consent saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions for streets chairman? Okay, Bill, your add-on committee report.
Myself and my committee is gonna be meeting with Mifflin County Regional Police Board on prices, on police protection. There's not gonna be setting in any kind of rules or anything. They want to sit down with us and tell us how they charge now, because they said, John McCall said they changed it from the last time. So all we're gonna do is sit down and talk fingers.
We're gonna.
Any question?
I don't think that much, I guess. Don't be chief of, you know.
Okay, anybody else have any public comments? We're gonna take about a five-minute recess.
Well, just real quick, when we go into executive session, should we have Mr. Ernest and the gentleman that he brought with him tonight?
I, I was gonna say that.
What are we gonna do, executive session? Maybe personnel? Mr. President?
Personnel.
It's a distinctive one.
Yeah, 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 if it is.
We're taking about a five-minute recess here.